Welcome! In this session, we'll dive into solving Leetcode problem number 1986: Minimum Number of Work Sessions to Finish the Tasks. This problem challenges us to efficiently distribute tasks across work sessions, minimizing the total number of sessions required. Let's explore the problem and uncover an optimal approach. In this problem, we are tasked with scheduling a set of tasks to minimize the number of work sessions required. Each task has a specific duration, represented by the integer array tasks, where each element indicates the time it takes to complete that task. Additionally, we are given a session time, which serves as the maximum time we can spend in a single work session. The goal is to complete all tasks while adhering to three important rules: first, you can include multiple tasks in a single session as long as their combined time doesn't exceed session time; second, tasks cannot be split across multiple sessions, meaning each task must be completed in one session; and finally, you are allowed to rearrange the order of tasks as needed to achieve the most efficient schedule. Ultimately, the objective is to return the minimum number of work sessions required to finish all tasks. The output of this problem is a single integer, representing the minimum number of work sessions needed. To understand this better, let's look at an example. Suppose we are given tasks equals (1, 2, 3), and session time equals 3. An optimal way to organize these tasks would be to complete tasks 1 and 2 in one session, as their combined time is 3, and complete task 3 in a second session. This results in a total of two work sessions. Importantly, this satisfies all the constraints: no session exceeds the maximum time, and no task is split between sessions. Therefore, the output for this example is 2. Now consider a slightly more complex example where tasks equals (3, 1, 3, 1, 1), and session time equals 8. Here, one optimal schedule is to complete tasks 1, 2, and 5 in the first session, taking a total of 5 units of time, and then complete tasks 3 and 4 in the second session, which takes 4 units of time. In this case, all tasks are completed within just 2 sessions, making the output 2. This demonstrates how grouping tasks strategically can help minimize the number of sessions required. Finally, let's look at an example where tasks equals (1, 2, 3, 4, 5), and session time equals 15. In this case, the total time required for all tasks is exactly 15, which matches the session limit. This means all tasks can be completed in a single work session, and the output is 1. This example highlights how the total time of tasks relative to the session limit can directly impact the number of sessions needed. To solve this problem effectively, approaches like backtracking or dynamic programming are well-suited, especially given the constraints on the size of the input. It's also important to consider edge cases, such as tasks that perfectly fit into sessions or tasks that must each be in their own session due to their durations. To tackle the problem of minimizing the number of work sessions required to finish all tasks within the given session time, we need to carefully consider our approach. This is a classic optimization problem where the goal is to group tasks into the smallest number of valid sessions. One potential method is brute force, where we try all possible groupings of tasks into sessions, ensuring that no session exceeds the allowed session time. While this method guarantees correctness, it involves generating all subsets of tasks for each session, which has an exponential time complexity. Specifically, the complexity grows as O (k to the power of n), where k is the number of sessions and n is the number of tasks. This makes brute force computationally infeasible for larger task sets, such as when n exceeds 20. Because of this limitation, brute force is not a practical solution for this problem, and we need to explore more efficient strategies. Another approach we can consider is leveraging bit masking combined with dynamic programming to optimize the search process. Here, we use a bit mask to represent completed tasks and maintain a dynamic programming table to minimize the number of sessions. Specifically, if dp mask represents the minimum sessions needed for a given mask of tasks, we iterate through all possible subsets of tasks, or sub-masks, that can fit into a single session. By updating dp mask, based on the previously computed results, we gradually build the optimal solution. This approach is more efficient than brute force, as it reduces the overall complexity to O (3 to the power of n) for iterating through all subsets of tasks. However, it still requires significant memory to store the dp table, which grows as 2 to the power of n with the number of tasks. While faster than brute force, the memory consumption makes this strategy less practical for larger inputs. To address these challenges, we can turn to a hybrid strategy that combines greedy techniques with backtracking. The strategy we ultimately chose is backtracking with pruning. This method strikes the right balance between simplicity, performance, and feasibility for task sets up to the problem's constraints, wherein is at most 14. A key aspect of this approach is sorting the tasks in descending order. By placing larger tasks first, we maximize session utilization and reduce the likelihood of creating unnecessary sessions. During the backtracking process, we explore possible assignments of tasks to sessions, prioritizing existing sessions before starting new ones. Pruning plays a critical role here, as we stop exploring paths where the current number of sessions exceeds the best solution found so far. This drastically reduces the number of recursive calls, making the approach computationally efficient. The combination of sorting, greedy task placement, and pruning allows us to solve the problem effectively within the given constraints. When comparing the various approaches, each comes with its own set of trade-offs. The brute force method guarantees correctness but is prohibitively expensive due to its exponential complexity, making it impractical for larger task sets. Bitmask dynamic programming, while elegant and optimized, can consume significant memory, which limits its scalability. On the other hand, backtracking with pruning offers the best combination of efficiency and flexibility. By utilizing greedy heuristics to prioritize task placement and pruning invalid paths early, this approach minimizes unnecessary computations. It is both practical and scalable for the given constraints, making it the ideal choice for this problem. In conclusion, backtracking with pruning provides a robust solution, balancing simplicity, performance, and feasibility, ensuring we can solve the problem effectively even with larger task sets within the constraints. In this problem, we are given an array of tasks where each task has a specific time requirement and a session time limit that represents the maximum time allowed per work session. The goal is to determine the minimum number of work sessions required to complete all tasks, ensuring that no session exceeds the session time limit and that tasks do not overlap between sessions. To achieve this, we need to carefully assign tasks into sessions while minimizing the total number of sessions used. The constraints we need to keep in mind are that the length of the tasks array is up to 14, and the session time can be at most 15. This means the problem space is small enough to consider a more exhaustive approach like backtracking. By using backtracking along with bit masking, we can systematically explore all possible ways of assigning tasks to sessions in an efficient manner. This approach ensures that we don't miss any potential solutions while also leveraging the constraints to keep our computation feasible. To begin solving this problem, we first sort the tasks in descending order. This heuristic is useful because scheduling larger tasks first can reduce the likelihood of unnecessary new sessions, effectively narrowing the search space early on. Next, we initialize the state variables. The used underscore sessions variable helps us track the cumulative time of tasks within each session, while a bit mask is used to represent which tasks are completed. For example, a bit mask of 011 means the second and third tasks are completed. The core of the algorithm lies in a recursive backtracking function called DFS. This function takes two parameters: the current bit mask, which tracks completed tasks, and the number of sessions used so far. The base case for this recursion is when all tasks are completed, indicated by the bit mask being equal to (1n, 1). At this point, we return the number of sessions used. In the recursive case, we iterate over all tasks. For each task that is not yet completed and can fit into the current session, we assign it to the session and recurs. If the task does not fit, we create a new session for it and continue the recursion. Pruning plays a critical role here, as it allows us to stop exploring paths that are guaranteed to lead to suboptimal solutions. Pruning is an essential optimization step to ensure that our backtracking approach remains efficient. By stopping exploration of any branch where the number of sessions exceeds the best solution found so far, we save significant computation time. Additionally, we incorporate memoization to store results of previously computed states. This is done by mapping the combination of the current bit mask and the number of sessions to the minimum sessions required for that state. Memoization ensures that we do not recompute the result for the same state multiple times, significantly reducing redundant calculations. With these optimizations, the algorithm proceeds by starting the depth-first search with an initial state where no tasks are completed, represented by mask equals zero, and with one session already in use, represented by number underscore sessions equals one. The result of the DFS is the minimum number of sessions required to complete all tasks while adhering to the constraints. By combining pruning, memoization, and efficient state representation, we achieve a solution that is both optimal and computationally feasible. The use of backtracking combined with bit masking provides several key benefits for this problem. Backtracking allows us to systematically explore all possible configurations of task assignments to sessions, ensuring that we find the optimal solution. Bit masking, on the other hand, offers an efficient way to track which tasks are completed by using a single integer. This reduces memory overhead compared to other tracking methods. Sorting the tasks in descending order is another critical insight. By assigning larger tasks first, we minimize the chances of leaving gaps in sessions that would force the creation of additional sessions later. This simple heuristic significantly prunes the search space. Pruning itself is a cornerstone of efficiency in this algorithm. By stopping exploration of any configuration that exceeds the current best solution, we avoid unnecessary calculations. Lastly, memoization ties everything together by storing results of previously computed states. This prevents redundant computations and ensures that the algorithm runs within a feasible timeframe, given the constraints of the problem. To implement this algorithm, we rely on a few key data structures. First, the bit mask, represented as an integer, is used to efficiently track which tasks have been completed. This is a compact and computationally efficient way to represent subsets of tasks. Second, the tasks themselves are stored in an array, sorted in descending order to facilitate better scheduling. Third, the memoization table is a dictionary that maps each state, defined by a combination of the current bit mask and the number of sessions, to the minimum number of sessions required. This avoids redundant calculations and speeds up the algorithm considerably. Analyzing the complexity of this approach, the time complexity is determined by the number of states, which is O (2 to the power of n asterisk n), all subsets of tasks times the number of sessions, and the time to compute each state, which is O (n). This results in a total complexity of O (2 to the power of n asterisk n squared). The space complexity is also dominated by the memoization table, which stores up to O (2 to the power of n asterisk n) states. While this might seem large, it is computationally feasible given the constraints of the problem. To better understand how this algorithm works, let's walk through an example. Suppose the input consists of tasks (3, 1, 3, 1), and a session time of 3. First, we sort the tasks in descending order to get (3, 3, 1, 1). In the first session, we assign the largest task, task 0, which takes 3 units of time. This fills the session completely. In the second session, we assign task 1, which also takes 3 units of time, filling this session as well. In the third session, we assign the remaining 2 tasks, tasks 2 and 3, which take 1 unit of time each. These fit together within the session time limit of 3. Thus, the minimum number of work sessions required to complete these tasks is 3. This example illustrates how sorting tasks, assigning them one by one, and creating new sessions only when necessary leads to an optimal solution. This solution employs a dynamic programming approach to solve the problem efficiently. The key challenge is to minimize the number of work sessions while ensuring that the total work in each session does not exceed the session time. First, we initialize an array dp to store the minimum number of sessions required for each subset of tasks, represented as a bit mask. dp 0 is set to 0 since no sessions are needed for an empty set of tasks. We then pre-compute the subset underscore time for all subsets of tasks. This array stores the total time required by each subset, represented by a bit mask. For each subset, we iterate through all tasks and sum up their times if the task is included in the subset, checked via bitwise and. Next, we use a nested loop to update the dp array. For each subset of tasks, mask, we iterate over all possible sub-masks. If the sub-mask is a valid subset of mask, check with mask and sub-mask equals equal sub-mask and its total time, subset underscore time, sub-mask, is within the session time, we update dp mask to the minimum of its current value and the value of dp mask caret sub-mask, plus one additional session. Finally, the value of dp dash 1, representing all tasks, gives the minimum number of sessions required to complete all tasks. This approach ensures that all valid subsets are considered and avoids redundant calculations using pre-computed values, leading to efficient performance. Here, we start by importing the necessary Java utilities and defining our solution class. The method minSessions takes two arguments: an array of task durations, tasks, and the maximum allowable session time, session time. The goal is to determine the minimum number of work sessions required to complete all tasks. First, we calculate the total number of subsets of tasks, represented as all masks, which is equal to 2 raised to the power of the number of tasks. We then initialize a dynamic programming array dp with a size of all masks, where each element is set to integer dot max underscore value to represent an unvisited state. The base case is dp 0 equals 0, meaning no sessions are needed to complete no tasks. Next, we pre-compute the total time required for all possible subsets of tasks using a subset time array. For each subset represented by mask, we iterate over each task and check whether the task is included in the subset using bitwise operations. If it is, we add its duration to subset time, mask. This pre-computation allows us to efficiently evaluate the feasibility of subsets during the dynamic programming step. Finally, we start iterating over all subsets of tasks using the mask variable. For each mask, we consider every possible sub-mask, which represents a subset of tasks within the current mask. Using bitwise operations, we ensure that we only consider valid sub-masks. If the total time for a sub-mask is less than or equal to the session time, we update dp mask to reflect the minimum number of sessions required to complete the tasks in mask. The value is updated as the minimum between its current value and the sum of dp mask caret sub-mask, the sessions needed for the remaining tasks, and one additional session for the current sub-mask. To avoid infinite loops, we terminate the inner loop when sub-mask becomes zero. Once the dynamic programming logic is complete, we return the value of dp all masks 1, which represents the minimum number of sessions required to complete all tasks. The all masks 1 value corresponds to the bit mask where all tasks are included, as it is the largest subset of tasks possible. This ensures that the solution accounts for every task, while leveraging the pre-computed values to minimize the number of sessions. The method efficiently combines bit masking and dynamic programming to solve the problem within reasonable constraints, making it a powerful approach for scenarios involving subsets and session limits. In this problem, we are tasked with finding the minimum number of work sessions needed to complete a list of tasks. Each task has a specific duration, and each session has a maximum allowable time. Tasks can be assigned to multiple sessions, but the total time of tasks within a single session cannot exceed the session time. To solve this efficiently, we use a bit mask dynamic programming approach, which allows us to explore all possible subsets of tasks systematically. For example, if we have tasks (1, 2, 3), and a session time of 3, we start by initializing our variables. The number of tasks, n, is 3, and the total number of subsets, all underscore masks, is 2 caret n, which equals 8. We set up a dynamic programming array dp with size 8, where dp 0 is initialized to 0 and all other values are set to infinity, representing the minimum sessions required for each subset of tasks. Additionally, we initialize a subset underscore time array, which will store the total time required for each subset of tasks. Both arrays are essential for efficiently solving the problem using dynamic programming. Now, we calculate the total time required for each subset of tasks and store it in the subset underscore time array. For example, the subset represented by the mask 0b001 corresponds to the task 1, so the time is 1. Similarly, 0b010 corresponds to 2, with a time of 2, and 0b011 corresponds to 1, 2, with a time of 3. We continue this process for all subsets, and the final subset underscore time array becomes (0, 1, 2, 3, 1, 3, 4, 6). Next, we use dynamic programming to compute the minimum sessions required for each subset. For instance, the subset 1, represented by mask equals 0b001 is valid within one session, so we update dp 1 equals 1. Similarly, the subset 1, 2, represented by mask equals 0b011 is also valid within one session, so we update dp 3 equals 1. Continuing this process for all subsets, we compute the final dp array as (0, 1, 1, 1, 2, 2, 2). The result for this example is dp 7 equals 2, meaning the minimum number of work sessions required is 2. Let's consider another example where the tasks are (3, 1, 3, 1), and the session time is 3. Here, the number of tasks, n, is 4, and the total number of subsets, all underscore masks, is 2 caret 4 equals 16. We initialize the dp array with 16 elements, where dp 0 equals 0 and all other values are set to infinity. Similarly, the subset underscore time array is initialized with zeros. We then calculate the total time for each subset. For instance, the mask 0b0001 corresponds to 3, with a time of 3, so subset underscore time, 1, equals 3. The mask 0b0010 corresponds to 1, with a time of 1, so subset underscore time, 2, equals 1. Continuing this process, we compute the final subset underscore time array as (0, 3, 1, 4, 3, 6, 4, 7, 1, 4, 2, 5, 4, 7, 5, 8). Using this array, we iterate over all subsets to fill the dp array. For example, the subset 3, represented by mask equals 0b0001, requires just one session, so dp 1 equals 1. Similarly, 3, 1, represented by mask equals 0b0011 is valid within one session, so dp 3 equals 1. Finally, for all tasks represented by mask equals 0b111, we find that 3 sessions are required, so dp 15 equals 3. Thus, the output for this example is 3 sessions. Finally, let's look at an example with tasks (5, 5, 5), and a session time of 5. Here, the number of tasks, n, is 3, and the total number of subsets, all underscore masks, is 2 caret 3 equals 8. We initialize the dp array with dp 0 equals 0 and all other values set to infinity. The subset underscore time array is calculated as (0, 5, 5, 10, 5, 10, 10, 15), where each entry represents the total time required for a specific subset of tasks. Using dynamic programming, we evaluate each subset. For example, the subset 5, represented by mask equals 0b001 is valid within one session, so dp 1 equals 1. However, subsets like (5, 5), represented by mask equals 0b011 are invalid because their total time exceeds the session time. Finally, for all tasks represented by mask equals 0b111, we find that 3 sessions are required, so dp 7 equals 3. Therefore, the output for this example is also 3 sessions. To analyze the time complexity, the solution employs a bit mask dynamic programming approach. Here, the number of tasks is represented by n, and since each task can either be included or excluded in a subset, the total number of subsets is 2 to the power of n. Let's break this down step by step. First, pre-computing the total time for each subset involves iterating through all subsets, from 0 to 2 to the power of n 1, and for each subset, we evaluate all n tasks. This results in a time complexity of O (2 to the power of n asterisk n) for this step. Next, during the dynamic programming calculation, we consider each subset and iterate over all its possible sub-masks. The number of sub-masks for a given subset is proportional to 2 to the power of k, where k is the number of bits set in the subset. If we sum this up across all subsets, the total number of sub-mask iterations is 3 to the power of n, a combinatorial result. For each valid sub-mask, only constant-time operations are performed, such as condition checks and updating the dp array. Hence, this step contributes O (3 to the power of n) to the time complexity. Now, when we combine these steps, the overall time complexity becomes O (2 to the power of n) times n plus 3 to the power of n. Since 3 to the power of n grows significantly faster than 2 to the power of n asterisk n as n increases, the dominant term is 3 to the power of n, and thus the final time complexity is O (3 to the power of n). Shifting to space complexity, let's consider the memory usage. The dp array, which stores the minimum number of sessions required for each subset of tasks, has a size of 2 to the power of n, leading to an O (2 to the power of n) space usage. Similarly, the subset underscore time array, which holds the total time for each subset, has the same size and space complexity of O (2 to the power of n). Other auxiliary variables, like mask, sub-mask, and loop counters, only require constant space, contributing O (1). Adding these together, the total space complexity is O (2 to the power of n). To provide some context, let's compare this solution to a brute force approach. A naive solution would involve generating all possible ways of splitting the tasks into sessions and then checking the validity of each split. However, the number of partitions grows exponentially with n, resulting in a time complexity of O (k to the power of n), or k is the number of sessions. This is far worse than the O (3 to the power of n) complexity achieved by the dynamic programming approach. Now, considering the best, average, and worst-case scenarios, the theoretical complexity remains O (3 to the power of n) in all cases. In the best case, tasks fit perfectly into one session, requiring minimal iterations. On average, tasks are split across multiple sessions, and most subsets and sub-masks are processed. In the worst case, tasks are highly unbalanced, requiring maximum iterations over subsets and sub-masks. Finally, let's understand the mathematical reasoning behind the big O complexity. The dominant term, 3 to the power of n, arises because each subset of tasks has a combinatorial number of sub-masks, and when summed across all subsets, the total number of sub-mask iterations reaches 3 to the power of n. This clearly overshadows the 2 to the power of n asterisk n term from pre-computing subset times. Therefore, the final time complexity is O (3 to the power of n), while the space complexity remains O (2 to the power of n). This balance of time and space usage makes the bit mask dynamic programming approach significantly more efficient than brute force, particularly for larger values of n. When solving this problem, there are a few common mistakes to watch out for. First, assuming that tasks must be completed in the order they are given can lead to inefficient solutions. The order of tasks doesn't matter; instead, focus on grouping them in a way that minimizes the number of sessions. Sorting the tasks in descending order is often helpful, as it allows you to prioritize larger tasks first, which aligns well with greedy or backtracking strategies. Another frequent mistake is failing to prune redundant states when using backtracking. Without effective pruning, like skipping identical states or stopping early when a solution is no longer feasible, you can end up with exponential time complexity. Pruning helps you drastically reduce the search space, making your solution much more efficient. Additionally, overlooking edge cases can cause problems. For instance, what happens if all tasks are smaller than the session time, or if a task exceeds the session time on its own? These scenarios require special handling to prevent runtime errors. Finally, using an overly simplistic greedy approach, such as always assigning a task to the first available session, might seem intuitive but often leads to suboptimal solutions. More advanced strategies, like combining greedy methods with DFS, are generally more effective. Another mistake to avoid is inefficient state representation in dynamic programming. For example, if you store the completed tasks as a list, your solution can become unnecessarily slow and memory-intensive. Instead, using a bit mask to represent the subset of completed tasks is much more efficient for both time and space. Now, from an interviewer perspective, this problem is an excellent opportunity to showcase your ability to optimize resource allocation. Make sure you highlight your approach to grouping tasks effectively and explain why you chose a specific method, whether it's backtracking, dynamic programming, or another technique. Be prepared to discuss the trade-offs of your approach, such as the balance between time complexity and implementation simplicity. Speaking of complexity, interviewers often ask about the efficiency of your solution. For instance, backtracking with pruning typically has a complexity of O (2 to the power of n), whereas dynamic programming with bit masking can reduce this significantly. Lastly, don't forget to explicitly address edge cases during your explanation. This demonstrates that you can think critically about problem constraints and ensure your solution is robust in all scenarios. To deepen your understanding of this problem, it's helpful to explore related problems that share similar concepts. For example, Leetcode 473: Match Sticks to Square applies backtracking with optimization. Leetcode 698: Partition to K equals some subsets involves subset partitioning and is another great problem to practice. Leetcode 1043: Partition Array for Maximum Sum focuses on dynamic programming, while Leetcode 805: Split Array with Same Average is a classic subset sum problem. These problems will strengthen your skills in areas like backtracking, dynamic programming, and resource allocation. In terms of alternative approaches, backtracking with pruning is a straightforward method where you try all possible task assignments but skip redundant states, such as when a task fits into the current session. but skip redundant states, such as when a task fits into the current session. This approach is simple to implement but can become slow for larger inputs due to its exponential complexity. On the other hand, dynamic programming with bit masking is a more advanced method. Here, you use a bit mask to represent which tasks are completed and minimize the number of sessions through state transitions. While this approach is faster for larger inputs, it does require more memory and can be more challenging to implement. Both methods have their strengths and weaknesses, so understanding their trade-offs is key. There are other alternative approaches worth considering as well. One is a greedy strategy combined with a priority queue. In this method, you assign tasks to the session with the least remaining time that can still accommodate the task. This approach is fast and works well in many practical scenarios, but it doesn't guarantee an optimal solution, so it might not always be the best choice. Another powerful method is using binary search in combination with a feasibility check. Here, you use binary search to minimize the number of sessions required, and for each potential solution, you verify its feasibility with a backtracking algorithm. This approach is particularly efficient for larger inputs, but it does require implementing both the feasibility check and the binary search, which can add complexity to your solution. By understanding these different techniques and their trade-offs, you'll be well-equipped to handle a wide range of variations on this problem. That's a wrap. We explored how to solve the problem using different approaches, balancing efficiency and accuracy. Remember, optimization problems like this one are common in interviews, so keep practicing. Thanks for joining, and be sure to check out more coding tutorials. See you next time. That's the end of this tutorial. I hope you found this explanation helpful for understanding the solution to this lead code problem. If you enjoyed this content, please consider subscribing to the channel for more coding tutorials and solutions. Feel free to leave a like if this video helped you, and don't hesitate to comment with any questions you might have. Thanks for watching, and happy coding.